We're going to be scheduled school meeting June 28th. First order of business is the approval of minutes due 14.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Casey. Any further comments on that?
No.
All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
I motion cares. The unions. I abstained from that. Oh, you did? I was not here for the. Okay, so sorry. Then we will. Then we will mark your decisions. So we'll. Thank you for clarification. I apologize. Approval of minutes in the non-public session. Um. Do you have anything for that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. The further discussion on that. And you were here.
I was.
All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries my last. Um, I did not receive any correspondence. Well, we did actually with this letter.
Correct.
Is it the only correspondence?
Yeah, the correspondence from the Lingwood Medical Center. And that is in regards to requesting a conversation with the board regarding what they're doing online on the part of the land.
So I think we should just add, as long as it works for them, add them to the next meeting agenda.
Okay.
And you know, this doesn't really seem to suggest any like that they have some sort of plan, do you know?
I don't think so.
It's just a let's try to see what's going on.
Yeah.
Uh, business administrator support them.
Okay, well, we are in summer mode and work continues to go on. So just, um, we'll be still running payrolls and bills. Um, so we can either come into the S A U, we are here, and or respond to the emails because we just wanted to keep getting the payments out. So, um, whatever's easiest for you, because we only have one meeting in July, but we don't want to sit on anything.
Wait, is it responded in emails?
Like you can approve her instead of going to sign stuff.
Yes, attach the check registers. I think some of you are getting because some of you are responding to the emails.
Yeah, I get those.
When I send out, here's this week's manifest gives the check register if you have any questions.
Oh, I didn't realize that like we could approve that via email.
We did that last year. We did that last summer. That that was based on a conversation we had last summer. It's either come into the S A U office.
Yeah.
Or this was the other way, so we could just keep business going.
Yeah.
If that's still okay.
I mean, that's easy.
And then when we get together for the meeting, if they still have to be signed, but at least I have an email saying it's okay to.
Okay, so then I didn't realize that that was sufficient, so.
It is.
Okay.
Yep. And again, that's what we did last.
Yep.
Um, the only other thing I have is the safe grant. Um, we do have final contracts with Cobb Hill. Um, they have been great to work with. We made the whole start of the money that was available. Again, the bids that we originally had were quite over the money. Um, we can't do all of the project, but they, Mark went through and said, okay, these are the priorities. How much of this can we get done? And it's a pretty clean, um, cutoff. So like if there's another, um, pot of money that comes out, or at least we know we have a piece here and a piece here that we still need to do at some point. Um, they're going to start ordering materials. The lead times are still pretty long, so they don't think they're going to start working this summer. Um, their goal is to start working next June. And in the meantime, get the materials so we can keep the costs of those materials that we, that are in the contract. Their only concern was because they're subcontracting out the work and, um, subcontractor, their labor rates might go up. So I said, well, maybe we can put a little bit of money in next year's budget to cover that increase. Um, because that's the only, that they're going to end up paying more for those labor rates. The material, which is the bulk of the project, should be paid for this summer.
And it's, uh, let's spend the money in that way.
Yeah, yeah, we have until December 2024 to officially complete the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, the only other thing is just, um, holding the material somewhere, whether it's held by us or held by the contractor. And I have an email into Primex because there's builders with insurance you can get because of those materials are sitting in a trailer somewhere. We just want to make sure we're protected if something happens. Whether they hold it, whether we hold it here or they hold it. But I don't know, their storage would have to, they might have to get it with a trailer or whatever. But we're working on that too.
Like it's like a storage container or something like that?
Yeah, something because I mean, we're talking a lot of windows and doors.
Do we have a place on?
We can probably, yeah, we have a place on campus to park it. But yeah, which it would be ideal if they can hold it.
Yeah. It's windows and door.
It's windows and doors. Yeah.
So it's a decent amount of windows and doors too.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty good size.
Right. Anyway, we're trying to have that set.
Did they give us any sense of like what's, what would be a reasonable amount to anticipate potentially having to come up with like in addition? And then like, you know, plan on 5% increase in labor cost?
That's exactly what they said. Yeah.
And we must have the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right, Dr. McGinn, that's all supported.
Yes, um, just Jean's Playhouse is presenting the Mosaikawa Concert on July 6th, truly nice. That will be in the back field. And yeah, in the back field. And then, um, at this time, we're moving forward with advertising and any of the open, of the open positions that we have. We still have the same number we had the last meeting. Um, we are starting to, uh, get some responses, so we will be interviewing. The only thing is our next, the timing, the next meeting isn't until July. So the nomination of that position cannot, I can't go anywhere, so I can't guarantee the position to that person. So even though the interview goes well and we say everything's great, uh, we have to stop until the nomination. So my request to the board is, would you allow the superintendent to move forward with that? Still have the nomination at your next meeting, but allow the process to continue. So I can say to them, yeah, I'm going to bring it to the board and, you know, um, you should be okay with that.
Isn't our next meeting only like three weeks away from now?
Middle of July.
So that I think is like three weeks away, two, two and a half months.
They're going to be looking for it.
You guys will be able to interview and do all that, you think, in three weeks?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just don't want to lose a candidate.
Of course.
If we can get the candidate, we're all competing in the book.
Would there be any reason to have emergency meeting or?
I almost feel like that would be a better option only because then we can sort of, because everything's sort of still contingent upon, you know, approval of the board, right? So like you could say, well, we can move forward. I can make, make the offer of, you know, the board's going to have to approve it. I, it seems to me like it just, we can, you know, like when we are doing the, when we're doing the interviews and then we can.
I do have an interview coming up tomorrow.
Okay. Is that, what, for what positions are?
Uh, high schools.
Okay. Uh, I'm just thinking like.
Could we do a Zoom meeting?
Well, I was going to ask that question. I could certainly ask that question to the attorney.
Yeah.
Um, and I can get back to you all.
We just have that be the only thing on the agenda.
Right. No, the, the law is that you have to have a form in person and then somebody else can zoom in. I just read that policy.
That law, was, was that different during COVID?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
To be free of your.
If the interview.
Yeah. Perfect world, the interview's tomorrow and do you have a meeting on Monday or Tuesday? Is that what you're thinking? Is that what you're saying or are you saying like July 10th or July 9th?
If I could do this tomorrow, I will, I will do it tomorrow. So I want to call the attorney, I want to call the attorney first.
What time is the interview at?
What time?
Yeah.
I think it's around 12:30. Because I'm in.
I'm just, because I'm only in Lincoln for the morning, but.
I think it doesn't have to be tomorrow. Don't, don't, I mean, it's, I don't have to get tough as hell tomorrow, but that, I'm not worried about.
Well, I can make it work.
Just let me find out. If that's what the board would want, that's okay. I could just call the attorney and find out what, what would be a way in which we can, the most efficient way I could do it. Or what could I say to the candidate and that, you know, so that I could have some confirmation that I don't want them to go someplace that.
Right. I mean, I.
Have we ever said no?
I mean, no, that's the thing, right? Like you bring this, it's, it's, it's very rare that there's any.
Yeah. Right, we have to by law, I have to make sure the forum, all the, all the, the paperwork is up to date and correct as far as the certificate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that type of thing. Um, and the, and the interview process is, is objective, you know, that type.
Yeah.
You know.
And I'm just thinking like, you know, what, if the, if, if what you're trying to do is to say to the, to the candidate, you know, what we're, I want, I'm going to make you this offer. Obviously, because of the, you know, the way that the school hiring works, it's contingent upon board approval, we don't have a meeting until.
Three weeks.
Three weeks out, um, but we can continue to move forward with the, you know, everything that we need to do to make that happen, we'll present it. And, um, as long as everything checks out, you know, there's very little chance that the board is not going to approve it.
I can certainly talk.
Um, I guess I'm not sure what else, or what other sort of opposition you were looking for as far as like, because I don't know that without presenting it to the board.
I know.
Yeah. And we can also.
Can it be, if they were going for another position, are they be subject to school board approval in most situations as well?
Yeah, the formality, yes, yeah. I just don't want to lose it. So let me just find out the details of the, of that so that I could at least use the correct wording.
And the other thing too is we can always, you can always reach out to us and we can schedule sort of a quick meeting with one thing on the agenda.
Right.
If that's necessary.
Yeah. No, actually.
I'm happy to come down here almost every night anyway.
Okay. I just don't want running back and forth.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
We do, we do, we need to do what we need to do to make sure that we have appropriate.
Yes, that's okay.
But it's on the same page.
Okay, so, um, the next thing is the English Language Jobs Curriculum is being reviewed and will be revised this summer over a five-year period. We do have a professor, um, coming from PSU who also works with the school district with student teachers. So he's familiar with that, um, in that area. So he'll, he'll be working with us as well.
Fourth grades, is that K through 12 or?
Oh, yes. And we have a team of teachers as well.
Yeah.
Covering those grades, so we'll be able to be a part of that. We do have the six, K through six STEM program, um, which is funded through Beyond Enrichment, uh, grant. So we have a K through two group and a three through five group. And the white knuckle science, uh, whimsy program is, is going to be, uh, working with the students in that. We have a couple of teachers that will be working also with the kiddos. And, um, that will be on Monday through Friday and, um, you know, it'll be coming out July 17th.
So is, is the K through six, obviously going to be sixth grade, is that just?
Sorry, K through two, three through five.
Sorry.
And then the summer school begins shortly after school is out. So summer school's already started for the middle high school students. And that's usually for credit recovery and, and whatnot. We also have tutorials going on as well, um, through that program. And those teachers within the building that, that do that and track the students. Uh, the elementary extended school year program, that will start, that's, that includes a partner program. That will start July 5th and it will end August 3rd. So the program. And also we have the girls of summer and boys of summer activities. And that will be, um, going on throughout the summer sporadically. For some of your correspondents, if you did get your, um, North Country Educational Newsletter uh, in your packet as well as your senior exit survey. So if you want to look at that data and if you have any questions about that, certainly we can figure it out at the next meeting. Uh, it's just interesting information.
Was that on the email? Like that's email packet?
Yeah. From the back. And then the rest we could do as we go through the agenda. No committee votes. And bill principal would be the same.
Thank you.
Oh, it's the facility, did me, sorry.
Yeah, you guys can walk into the, uh.
Yeah.
I've got a scramble of notes. Mark was talking so fast, I couldn't.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, because he wanted to know if it was feasible for him to actually get a price or would it be wasting the time to get a price for the garage? And we went through and walked the garage and the garage is just falling apart. And it just, the walls are falling off of it, everything, so. Basically, he wanted us to just say yes or no. Do we want him to go through and get prices to replace that garage? I talked to Mark after he left here too, because we forgot to go over the fact that we wanted to include the moving of the path in the same bid down to that crossbar.
Yep.
So I think, I mean, in my opinion, I'm going to ask these two gentlemen to, in their opinions, uh, we've got to do something. That's my opinion. You guys?
Yeah. 100% the building is inadequate. It's just falling apart, falling apart. Well, I was just thinking that as the doors were open as I drove in and it looks like it's, um, a trap a block full. And it's just the old T111, the building, like that's.
Yeah, and it's two by four construction, a lot of it. And it's the beams themselves, when I was there, the main carriers were all heating up like carp and the rams. And then I've got stuff piled on top of all that beam with, so it, it's time.
And what is he proposing that where you look at?
What is, well, what is there right now is 40 by 45. He would like to put in like a construct metal frame building. He'd like to go up to 40 to 60, clear out a little bit of the yard so we can put stuff out in the yard too. Uh, he wanted to be able to put the, the vehicles inside at night like the truck. Stuff like that, so it's not exposed to the winter, all the stuff in the winter. Not looking at the possibly water for maybe to wash up with and stuff, but at this point, it's no water, no heat, nothing. Just another building out there. He did propose bidding with, bidding without, bidding with, uh, separation wall, bidding without, stuff like that. That's down the road. Right now, we just want to know if he should, if he should go through with even getting the bid, not bid, prices.
Yeah. Sort of even to just get a sense of working costs.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, we basically said, of course, we have to do that. But obviously we wanted to bring it to the board too and just let you know where, what we're thinking and what we're doing.
And that's a bit of a cob, cobbled together structure anyway, right? There was, there was only two bays and then there was another one out of the.
They grid that, yeah. That was all sharp right there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh. Sorry, where, in what direction would they be expanding to the 60? Back, back.
Yeah, back. And just clear out a little bit on the side.
Yeah.
To, to pull stuff in, work on stuff there, do a lot more stuff like that. Outside the building, not, not buildings, square footers. And then, like I said, move the trail a little bit, just at the same time.
Good.
I mean, if we needed water, if there is water out back there on Blenheim Street, we own the property that has the water on it already with the bio, I guess, there's a sewer there too if we had to, but.
In the, in that little turnaround there?
Yeah. Um, the Cobb Hill bid, thanks to them. Uh, we're going to make the contract, we're going to be able to use those funds. Thank you, Debbie. Uh, in a nutshell, we're still going to be able to do all the outside doors for the high school. We're going to be able to do all the outside windows for the high school. Um, I believe the outside doors in the middle school and the outside windows at the middle school. And no elementary outside doors at this time. I think that was it, right?
Yes, basically all the windows down the high school, all of the outside doors, then the middle high school, all of the inside high school doors and middle school, we can't get all the inside doors.
Yes, yeah. So we're able to get that with all the funds that we have right now. So that's a big chunk out of what we're going to do anyway.
And we were sort of in the process of doing all the windows down there anyway, right? So piecemeal.
It is piecemeal, yeah.
But we're just going to take that entire.
Yeah, use that money and use it. Uh, he went over what we're going to do, what we needed to do to finish the floors, but there's no way I would even quote any of that right now because I have such a scramble of notes on it that. But he just went over basically what the carpet that needed to be replaced, what vinyl was going to stay, what wasn't, stuff like that. And he did, uh, we are going to contract a gentleman out to do tree removal over the summer. On, we're paying, I guess, on hourly basis. And we're going to get like the outdoor classroom, get that all savined up. That's we're going to start with that stuff, just do little pieces at a time and. And that was basically it for now. I mean, everything that we discussed as far as what we need approval for, and so that's all we really did.
Uh, has it been, is it Mark and his crew that have been doing like the little landscape thing around here? We'll sort of notice.
Girls up here, yeah. His crew up here.
Looks good up there.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Wait, do we need to, uh, I mean, I, it sounds like it's pretty, pretty like clear that we need something about that building, so I think it makes sense to just go ahead and give Mark the.
Permission, is it?
Yeah, just to, you know, to go ahead and say, you know, see what, see what we can come up with, boss. I mean, obviously we're, well, they look at it on that, but it's not, it sounds like it needs to be done.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
At least that's my opinion, it sounds like. Doesn't?
Uh huh.
Yeah, fine. Um, nominations, recommendations, resignations?
None of this time.
Uh, administrative loyalty longevity of term.
Yes, you have that new packet.
Yep.
And that is a, a document which we, we update when, when the numbers change with the CBA. The CBA is like a trickle effect and I have to go through and find out where, where it's involved and the place with all the other documents. And we'll simply have the documents that are telling.
And this was one of the changes that we highlighted to the board when we were reviewing, um, that negotiations process. I'm choosing the. Is this, so this is for administration. Was there a longevity one for staff as well?
Uh, from the CBA, yeah.
Yeah, so the, so that, the staff longevity bumped up to this, so we're just following suit with the administrators.
Yeah.
And, uh, what's the, do you know what like the, the fiscal impact of that is? I mean, it's like, it's not often we have somebody with 20 years' experience retiring. It's like, you know, once every, every year.
I know, I don't expect that.
What's that?
Lately, it's been significantly less than done.
Yeah.
Even so.
Um, so we just need to vote to change that?
To approve the change.
Yeah, approve the change. Alter the motion to approve the change to the, um, reflect, uh, the collective bargaining agreement amounts on the administrative loyalty management plan.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? Um, can we just include that, um, administration is not allowed to retire anytime soon?
Let's see if somebody reached that benchmark.
Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Uh, those, those sessions and how much cares? Next up is school board goals. So we. And this is just like the same, sort of the same thing that we went over last time? Is that it?
You have made a few changes, um, the C I P stuff. Um, and the membership to the School Board Association.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And you just wanted to get brought forward.
Right.
This meeting.
Right, because it was some potentially problematic language with like encouraging members to engage in legislative lobbying. Yeah, individually as those two, um, as a board.
The only question I had, and it's very minor and we can leave it, is under citizenship, the goal enhance participation in the school community. I feel like enhance is not the right word. Um, enhance participation in the school community. So we're trying to make sure that we are a part of the school community. So maybe ensure participation in the school community or encourage or.
What about just participate?
Participate, the goal is to participate in the school community, yeah. I mean, maybe it makes sense and I'm just.
Uh, I mean, the way it's written is sort of like, we recognize that many of the board members are regularly involved in the school community. Um, we want to just ensure that all, all board members are encouraged to do so. And, you know, for those with maybe minimal, that we, we can't stop.
Um, yes.
But I think it'd be simplified and just, we're all held to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with that. Left words, but it's typically better. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay. Yeah. Um, can we, uh, vote to approve it with that one change?
Yes, you can.
Is that what you're okay with, the last one? Then I'll accept the motion to approve the, uh, school board goals for fiscal year 2023, 2024, um, with the noted change. But, like, Joe?
A second.
Joe, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying so. Yeah, sorry. The piece on self-determination and tolerance, the increased knowledge of board under roles. Everyone with the word roles, because I know this, the action plan is formed around further educating ourselves about tradition or. I guess if I were to read increased knowledge of board under roles, it's only reason me like, we should know our role. And it's almost, I feel like it's more about, um, growth or education or society knowledge. State. What? As far as the verbiage on the.
The goal itself.
The goal itself, not, not necessarily that last line there, the keep current board role in those kind of updates or?
Yeah, well, I, you know, the action plan, I, I think is good because it's, it speaks to, I, I don't think the action plan connects with the goal as well. Because again, if I were, someone just reading a goal plainly without the support of action plans, I would say, well, show my roles. Um, I don't know if it's increasing knowledge of board responsibilities.
Yeah, I think that the roles, I mean, I think the, the objective of the, or what we're trying to get at maybe is that the, there's a lot of things that are, that change every year in the, in the education realm from, you know, things that we are required to do, the things that we have, uh, an option to do. Uh, and, you know, I think the, the purpose, or at least a part of the purpose of this is sort of trying to keep everybody, uh, up to speed with what, you know, what's out there for things coming down, coming down the road at us, things that are like, that we're supposed to be doing currently. Um, and the role sort of does change occasionally, like if, if there is some modifications to some rule decision surrounding the boards and our, like what we have to do. There's constantly like, anytime that there's new, you know, funding going out there, there's always some sort of board obligation, oversight and like, you know, things like that. So I don't think it's totally inappropriate. I think the idea though is that like, it's to make, keep, keep current with, with, you know, the. For what a board is supposed to be given, or what, what we are all supposed to be given in board.
And I would say, right, it's like making sure that you are. That, yeah.
Opportunities, opportunities or teams. About for education. Yeah, I mean, I.
What are we looking at, amending the?
I think what Kevin's suggesting is changing that word is to sort of even more, more encompass the, the objective, which is just be like, you know. We want everybody to stay current with what. Board expectations are. Cause I think the board role is not just, it does encompass things like. Sometimes the fluctuating or in- increasing. Um, confidentiality and stuff like that, we should be on top of that, we should, that, we should know. You know, work a lot as regards to, who, who requires the information about, uh, that can be shared, that can't be shared. There's always updates, technologies, type of dates, the board services, Sam, how, oh, oh. You know, there's been, there's a lot of stuff that's sort of been flopped, and like, I think. So as I understand the project, it's, we want the members of the board to also be. Obviously not know everything there is to know, but, so, so people just.
The way I see, did I see?
Yeah.
Okay, so the way I see it is, is that, that these objectives can support the goal, these, if you. If you interact in, in some of these objective acts, or these activities. Then you will increase the knowledge of your roles, responsibilities of the board.
Right, and, yeah, I think.
Will help you understand the better.
I understand what you're saying, Kevin, like, we should know what we're doing, but. I think what Jay is saying and how I feel as a board member that. I mean, I've been on the board for six years, and I definitely learn every single year. It's like, it is what we're, you know, some, some new thing will be going on that I. We dive into that and figuring out kind of what our role is. Um, but generally speaking, right, I know like what my role is on the board, but it's a. Continuing learning.
So maybe it's just adding roles and opportunities? Because, yeah, to your point, I, I agree, right, same thing, there's like this. Continue a learning. But to your point of. Things changing and. It may not be our duty, but it would be an opportunity for them to take advantage of. Believe that it's a part of. I, I'm with Jay, and I'm very, very, I say, less words are better.
What if you just add, and opportunities?
Said that, is that what we're trying to get at?
Cause I'm talking myself through it, maybe, maybe that is already tied into your role and. As he, ourselves based through these action plans is a part of our work, so.
I mean, if, if you're comfortable with it, the, the motion was, was made and seconded to approve it with just that previous modification, but you are. Approved. Okay, alright, so, um, then all those in favor. Uh, approving the draft with the modification related to. Um, participation. That's what we, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those both, the sentiments, not having to carry. And student handbook.
So, student handbook is ready for, uh, approval right now, we just have some, uh, minor, a final update, it's scheduled on staff. Uh, so. Everything else is all set to go, so. Some approval, and pending, you know, updated.
Mm-hmm.
Information, we, we did not give you in this, this one, the, um, policies. Cause the last year we did that, and we couldn't get it through, it was too much of a thing when we were emailing, and, and so the policies are all up to date. So we're only gonna, we just take the policies and put them.
Yeah.
And then put them within the, uh, table of contents, the way it is, so you already have, have a policy, so I think you're all set with that.
So. In the book that gets sent out, though, they really include the actual policies that are here?
Yes.
If you look at the sample, you'll see that there's a big jump in page numbers, and that's where all the policies go.
Fifty-two to one eighty-four. I did not note anything when I was reading through it. So are you looking for us to approve this, Nate?
Yes, we do have, we have some changes, and I had two things that, um, Tam had looked at it, do you have it? Okay, on page forty-four. Where it says sign in and out. Uh, what did you want Dr. Sam?
Uh, Tam, you recommended that you remove the. Um, purposes of, or parents or guardians of the elementary school students, because the students sign out in the elementary school. But due to you thought that that should remain and that should be enforced.
I think the parents should, or guardian should be signing off the elementary kids. I've always had to sign out, like, it's an elementary, or, but that's.
Who, what was, what was Davis?
She.
That the students should be signing themselves off?
The, she said that the students have been signing themselves out, in and out. And that we either enforce what the, the, um, handbook says. Or remove that line.
I know that Maple has said that she, uh, signs in if I have to drop her off late. I don't always go in, she just goes in, she signs in. Um, but I don't think she's ever been able to leave unless I go up there.
I mean, it makes sense that, that, that the student is able to come in and sign in. I don't see that as a problem, we're not, we're, we're taking them in.
Right.
That's not, I mean, that's, that's not a safety issue, right, here.
Right.
Letting them go without a parent seems problematic.
Reason wouldn't, my, my kids, when I pick them up, they sign themselves out, but I'm, I'm there with them. Yeah, they can't just, they can't sign themselves out, they.
Right, right, you're physically there instead of, they're just doing the signing.
So can we just adjust that to? Um, just reflect that, like, sign in can be done by the student, but sign out has to be with a parent or.
Or when announced, that is right, it signs out, so it's already there. It's just a sign-in, sign in, they don't have to, they just come into the building.
Excuse my, okay, yeah, yeah, so that's what, so, okay.
But then.
I, I think I'm in favor of leaving it as it's worth it.
Yeah, sure, I mean, you could say, or sign out, or, or sign out with a parent present, if they're trying to encourage, like. The child, the kids, like, being responsible and knowing, you know, I don't know what they're doing, but.
I just don't know that. I mean, I can, I can see maybe like a parent who has, who lives. Right here, that, that their kid is sick, and they just wanna let them walk home, when the kid walks to school every day, but I don't. I don't know if that's a good idea.
Yeah, I know.
I can see a parent wanting to do that, but I don't know that we should.
We don't need what high school students walk home from the dance hall, so I think. I don't think anybody out here like that is a good idea.
It sounds like we're all here and looking at.
Uh, the other one is page forty-five. And then this one says, the textbooks and materials. Change, uh, change the student to the student's parent or guardian should be responsible. So on page forty-five, we're talking about textbooks and materials, and on the third line, it's the student will be required to pay for the damage to it. So it's a, um, she suggested the student's parent slash guardian.
I mean, aren't we trying, at, at least in some part, trying to encourage students to. Exercise the personal responsibility with respect to these things?
I mean, I think it's up to the parent.
Yeah, as I say, ultimately. But, but, you know. This is what we're giving to the students, we want them to, to have some ownership.
Right. And if a parent reads that, they're gonna know if the student is, is responsible, ultimately, they're responsible.
The parents, correct. Um, I, I'm in favor of leaving that as, as well.
Yeah.
And then, any else?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, okay, I got a question.
Asking if I've been breaking the rules and riding my bike. Um, main street to that elementary school. On the road, because.
If you're riding on property, you are.
Take the pair of students bicycles, and sleep with the doors, if we walk on school property, so. When I make a lap on the main street to the school, I should be walking on that.
What do you see during school hours?
Well, he's talking about like drop off, cause he walked to school with the kids. I think, and another thing too, is kids, kids bike down the school path, they, they always hop off. At the, at either the bottom path, or they walk their bikes through the woods here, um, see that, pretty regularly. No one seems to be like, driving, riding across the parking lots. Um.
Yeah.
And even the kids that skateboard, they pick, they know that they pick their boards up, you know, when they hit the parking lot, but they, but they are. Walking down the school path, they're skating on the school path, so, right.
We did this during school hours, it's one thing, because it's about getting to school, leaving school, so you're. I feel like we, did we talk about this last year, when we were going through the handbook?
I know they run signs up in the building, you can go schoolers, you can, you know.
Just wait a minute, Kevin will talk himself into doing that.
Sorry, me and my daughter, by the way, not my son. If you, if you see you're breaking the law, you probably are. Unless I'm wanting to go on the public records, you know, to have a break into the walls.
But it seems, you know, it's a good outlet, I think, for people, for, it's in balance to get to school and. It's, I, 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 I don't know, there might be some safety things I'm not concerned here, or, or needs to be adjusted to, you know. Outside of school hours, or. I don't know if this is a formal policy that's, you know, the master policy, or this is.
I mean, it could be during school, I mean, during the school day, before, that, including before and after school, there. Only because when, there's a lot of people walking around, getting in their car, doing, going here, going there, within the parking lot, I could see with. Bicycles, if kids were just getting on their bicycles and taking off, they could. You know, it's, you know what I mean, or.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
Or coming in and out with traffic.
I don't think you're encouraging, like. Opening it up as a free for all, right, you're thinking like. If you, if you come off the main street, you can bike to the cross, to where the crosswalk is, and then you, you get off your bike, and then walk from there, or like. You stop at the end of the school path, and walk from there.
Right.
You know, like, like, basically what people do, I mean.
I, I guess I'm advocating for, you know, proper bike etiquette, which is, you know, you're out on the right side of the street, stop, and then. Go to the next stop sign, and then you ride to the elementary school, and like, yeah, I'm not just advocating for roaming around.
I mean, I think it would make sense maybe to. If we're looking to make an adjustment to it, so I think to reflect what people already do, for the most part. You know, like, just no, no, nothing in the parking lots. Because if you, if you're, you know, if you look at all the ways that people get to school, they'll cut across front field, they'll come through the path in the back here, they'll come through the paths. You know, the, the school path from True Street or School Street, um, and. Everyone just sort of bikes until they get to the parking lot, and then everyone gets off their bikes or walks from there, so. That, and that makes sense, I mean, I think that from a safety perspective, that makes sense.
Yeah, especially at the end of the day, when people are backing out, so if you go through the parking lot, people are backing out in that back road down there, you're gonna get crushed, so. It'd definitely be better about walking your legs in the parking lot.
And I think it teaches that our duty enforce that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I wouldn't have an issue with putting that, just saying, must be walked. On in, in this school parking lots. Or like, you know, once you, once you reach the school parking lot. We also like, this is one of those things where like, if this is, if this is the rule, we're not enforcing it, no one's out on the school path, tell people to get their, off their bikes.
But they are in the parking.
Yeah, but they're in the parking lot. Is that resolved here?
Is it clear what you should do now, or?
I mean, you would have to get off your bike at this crosswalk, and then walk up the parking lot, instead of walk riding across the back.
You know, your role is a safe. Yeah, I, I feel like I'm taking this apart, but.
I could show you the, the way you can come across the backfield of the school, or you don't have to.
I'm not trying to be selfish in this, I'm just trying to, you know, when. I, I noticed this when I was riding to school one day, was that, you know, some people were using the, um, the side marker.
Yeah.
Right, and then I was riding on the road.
Yeah.
My view, from a bikeing standpoint, riding road or not a side marker. So. Yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to make sure that I was setting a good example, and not doing something.
I mean, technically, you're right, that's what you're supposed to do on the roads and everything else, you're, you're correct.
Right.
We just don't want all the kids coming down the road.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, and, and I, I totally get that, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, but you are correct.
The answer is no, you're not following the rules, you're not setting a good example, but we know that you will learn from this. And.
I might not.
You can be the example of what not to do.
I don't know that we've seen it, there's some, uh, yeah, well, I would, I would expect it, like, with the. As these e-bikes get cheaper, people, you know, like, start commuting, like, you know, kids coming in on. Not necessarily like students, but like parents bringing their kids to school on, they have like, you know. Baskets for kids to sit in front and back and stuff.
Maybe walk in parking lots and crosswalks?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that basically what, the way that it's enforced currently. Makes sense from a safety standpoint to be our policy, which is, once you hit the parking lots. Uh, no matter how you get there, with, whatever way you're coming in, you should be walking. Not sure how we would word that, but.
I said, I'll figure it out.
Thank you, listen.
Yeah.
And on the sign in and sign outs, uh, there wasn't high school kids that we didn't allow to go leave the dances, it was middle school, just for clarification. I don't want the high school kids going out, they go outside. It was middle school, and stuff like that, still, they gotta, that parents come here.
Any further, um, discussion about the? Handbook? So can we approve it with the modification to the biking. Launch skateboarding section?
And whatever pending things you mentioned before, that you have, like, teacher stuff and stuff.
Yeah, schedule, schedule stuff, not any self-studying.
It's for the staff at this point, because the last, um, update you got included the new high school schedule.
Oh, so the high school schedule is just staff?
Okay, yep, so it's just a new staff.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that. And I'm not sure that we'll act, actually be able to add any more.
Do we, what's the deadline to go to print?
Um, it's the end of July.
So it's possible.
Yeah. Let's see.
Um, then I would accept the. Wait, do we have any handbook handles?
I don't think so.
I'd say I'm looking to approve the uh, handbook as presented with the modification discussed. So, thank you, Joe. Second, thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those sessions, and that much cares. And known business. That's your phones.
Everything's going on, the orders, schedule, there's the teacher plan, supplies a lot.
I will see students or staff, it's evening for community. So I will set them up into a journey.
I'll make a log chat.
Thank you, Joe. I have a, I know we do not have to do chairs. By saying aye, aye, and that is yes. Thank you, you can do plant the chairs.